Meeting is called to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Villarreal, salute to the New Mexico flag led by Counselor Ives, and an invocation from Counselor Rivera. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the zealous symbol of perfect friendship amongst united cultures.
Thank you, Mayor. If we can bow our heads. As we gather here today as representatives of this city, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our services to fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better city and community. Amen. Are there any thoughts or remembrances? Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Counselor Rivera. I'd like to acknowledge the passing of two women. Rebecca Parsons is an individual who I've known for many, many years. Her husband, Jack Parsons, a lot of people are familiar with, but Rebecca left her mark in the building business with the sconces. She was a potter. And so in the eighties, she started to develop those sconces that you see. They're ubiquitous. They're all over town. I mean, she did much more than that, but she passed away recently, and she's a fine person. Mary Kilpatrick, many people know Mary from her work in education. She and her husband, Gary, were good friends. Their children are fine people. And I'm sorry that both of them passed too soon, but anyways, I wanted to acknowledge the two women. Thank you.
Counselor Villarreal.
Thank you. I'd like to send love and light to Shirlene Sitten. Her father passed away in September. His name was Hal Sitten, from Denton, Texas, and just wanted to let folks know so that you can send your regards to her as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Last Wednesday was the three-year anniversary of my father's passing, so we can remember him this evening as well. Anything else? All right. If you can join us in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Thank you. Could you please call the roll?
Mayor Weber.
Present.
Ms. Vida.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Ms. Ives.
Here.
Ms. Rendell.
She is excused.
Ms. Vida.
Here.
Ms. Romero-Worth.
Here.
Ms. Vialcopter.
Here.
Ms. Viadian.
Present.
Do you have a quorum present?
Thank you. Item number six on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The item number seven is the approval of the consent calendar. Are there items to be taken off of the consent calendar? If not, can we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Second. Could you please call the roll?
Ms. Vida.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Vida.
Yes.
Ms. Romero-Worth.
Yes.
Ms. Vialcopter.
Yes.
Ms. Viadian.
Yes.
Ms. Weber.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Now, we have a slew of minutes to approve. We have to do these individually, so could we start with the special governing body meeting of September 16? Are there changes or amendments to the minutes, or if not, can we approve them? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The special governing body meeting of September 20th, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then we have the third version, the third item, is regular governing body meeting of September 25, 2019. Move for approval?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I see no presentations. Is that correct? All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now, we will move, unless I am missing something, to our municipal court judge, Judge V. Hill, to give us an information presentation on the state of the Santa Fe Municipal Court. Judge, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. You have before you your packet that gives you the update of the state of municipal court. And it's, the only thing I really need to highlight is the fact that you haven't heard before, is that Santa Fe Municipal Court is going paperless, and we've started that project now. Hope to make it be really soon before that can happen. And with the cooperation of IT, we're going to hopefully make that happen, I'm hoping, within a three-month period. There's a lot of things to work out with that. The other thing that is fairly new is the homeless court is now going into a pre-prosecution alternative instead of a prosecution alternative.
Excuse me one second, Judge. Could we either take the conversation outside or bring it to a halt? Thank you.
The pre-prosecution is intended to provide more services for the homeless court population, so we're trying to connect with other agencies in Santa Fe. We've done that, but it's been very limited. And the needs of the homeless population are quite large. We think this is a good venue to expand the opportunity for our homeless population to actually get services that would be needed. So that pre-prosecution component is, has been transferred. We're operating under that. The other highlight that you're probably aware of is we did receive $117,000 from the New Mexico Legislature to actually put in the glass, the bulletproof glass that's required when, for clerks that are handling the public as they come in and register to go into court and pay fines, those kinds of things. So we're hoping to get that completed soon. So I think those are the highlights. Other than that, I stand for questions. One thing that you may have noticed is another sort of mini-highlight is there has been a hike in the traffic citations that we were being processing. Not quite, but close to about 100 of them within the last month. My assessment of that is that it probably is the result of the blitz that occurred this summer, and we still have to do a lot of more data input with regard to that. But most of those that I'm seeing are cellphone violations. So-
Thank you.
Other than that, that's it.
Are there questions, or comments, or compliments? I did notice the traffic violation, Judge, and you and I speak about this pretty regularly, and I think it's interesting to see that the enforcement has brought more people into your courtroom. Are you noticing anything about the way people are responding to those violation citations? Are you noticing any particular change in attitude, or is it simply process, process, process?
That's a loaded question.
Not intended.
With regard to that, because it depends on the offense. If I zero in on the cellphone violations, I do get people coming to court and saying, "I see people on their cellphone all the time." And I said, "And I see those violators." So there's some misperception out there that those cellphone violations aren't occurring. They are, and I'm receiving them. And that's really one of the myths I'm trying to expel from what happens in municipal court. We are getting the cellphone citations, and we are processing them appropriately.
Thank you. Other questions? Yeah, Counselor Vialcopter.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, first of all, thank you for being here tonight. And I am, you might recall, a big proponent of alternative sentencing, like drug court and your DUI court program. And I'm just, I'm pleased to see that this is continuing in your court. I think it's a great program because if you treat people and get them off the streets, at least for now, and rehabilitate in some way, it really makes a difference. And it makes a difference in district courts when they go through drug court as well. And sometimes you have repeat offenders that end up there. And, but anyway, this program is very, very good, and I'm glad to see you're still working it. On the paperless process that you're going through, when you do get into all that and it's all done, will the public be able to research records?
Of course.
Okay.
Anything that becomes to us is a part of a public record-
But online?
-that is defined with that, and the public will have access to it, and IPRA still applies.
But online, they'll still be able to have case lookup, or will they be able to?
Currently, what we have online, and I do remember, Counselor Vialcopter, one of your questions and comments last time was that Rio Rancho had a lot going online. We currently do have our docket online, but we don't put judgment and sentences online. That remains part of a person's file, and that does have to go through the appropriate process of request.
Because in district court, on newmexicocourts.gov or .org, I don't remember, you can look up, I mean, you can't see the actual documents-
Right.
...but there's a chain of history. And I think, well, I know, you know, obviously, I've said, in Rio Rancho, City of Rio Rancho is on New Mexico Courts. And I think there are some other cities, and of course, Metro Court is in there, too. So I was just curious about whether Santa Fe was ever going to join the ranks in that regard.
Well, you know, I think that we've had these discussions before, and there is a level of protectiveness that we have with regard to disclosure of the outcomes of defendants' cases and what their sentences are. I think with regard to a history, the only time we've really looked at or received many public records requests are usually from the FBI. It is rare that we get any other kind of request for anyone else. Remember, this is a limited court. We're a court of limited jurisdiction. Most of the cases we process are traffic. The DUIs that we do, the first and second time offenders, are processed very similarly. So, you know, we would look into that. I'm not sure that the discussion will be any different than what we've had in the past, because there is a level of protectiveness of people's records and their, the outcome in particular. I'm not sure why someone would want to know the history, and if they do, that becomes part of the public record request, you know? And so to make a history available for someone who's had traffic citations would be a part of the discussion as well. We'll certainly continue discussing it. But, you know, I'm not sure what the outcome will be once it's done. I do have a new staff attorney that I guess I need to highlight as well, and he will be coming up in a future presentation to you all. The staff attorney has really taken the ball and run with it in his new position, because he does have a legal background, and he is the one that's spearheading a lot of the changes. I'm particularly pleased that he's on board because of all the policy and procedure and rule changes that we've had to deal with through the Supreme Court, and his legal background will be incredibly helpful in developing those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Judge, for coming. Just a quick question on the animal-related arraignments. Can you speak to the nature of those?
Most definitely. Most of the animal-related charges that we get are public nuisance area. Most, all of those go to mediation, because it's usually a neighbor to neighbor.
And when you say nuisance, we're talking about noise of, like, barking dogs kind of thing?
Barking dogs. And the animal control officers, when they do respond to people who file a complaint when a dog is loose, so we get a restraint, and then at that time, they do discover whether or not they're appropriately vaccinated, whether they have their permit. And usually, by the time they come to my court, all of that is in place. So the compliance piece, when it comes to animal cases, is huge, processing them through municipal court. Occasionally, we will get a dangerous animal charge. That is a misdemeanor. That does get prosecuted, and the person is also entitled to a public defender with regard to that. I've had to probably put two dogs to sleep, and that, of course, is the next level of a charge after a dangerous, and that's a vicious animal. And that usually involves an incident that requires that sentence.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions? Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome.
Glad to see you again. Can you talk a little bit about the circumstances for the individuals when they come to you through homeless court?
Usually, it's because, and I can speak to two experiences with that. When the panhandling ordinance was in effect, it no longer is, that is what they came before me. And they would get arrested, and at arraignment the following day, I would take their plea. If they pled guilty, I would plea out the case. Usually, it was a not guilty plea, and we scheduled them for homeless court. So the case was processed through homeless court, where the homeless population had an opportunity, a fair opportunity, to speak to a public defender, and of course, the city attorney prosecutor was there as well. So most of those cases got processed through homeless court after they were arrested for panhandling. The current arrest that is occurring with homeless population that I'm seeing more of are criminal trespass charges. But we're following the same procedure. When they get the criminal trespass charge, and they are arrested, they are arraigned, and at the arraignment, they are processed to homeless court. At that point in time, we're hoping to get more in-depth evaluation of what the needs are. We currently are able to meet some of the needs with the partnership we have with the Interfaith Council, but there are more services available out there that we are trying to look for. One of the biggest ones is not, many of them are Medicaid-registered, and that's a huge piece that will provide a great service for them if that happens.
So in the, in the, in the world of social services, one of the words that you hear a lot is navigator, navigation, someone to help guide an individual through the process as well as help them identify organizations, places where they can seek help. Is that something that, not necessarily your court provides, but can you, can you provide an introduction in those cases?
Actually, we have been speaking to the city and the staff with regard to the current navigator positions that they're trying to identify for assistance throughout the community. Homeless court has been one of those areas that that navigator position is being considered for.
Okay.
And so that is particularly helpful to us. I do have an in-house staff that's been in communication with community services with the city of Santa Fe to find out what kind of tools they actually provide. And, and we're looking to see, to start that going. And hopefully, if we're able to get to the point where a navigator would be a good fit for homeless court, then certainly that is a direction that we're completely open to.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Counselor. Other ques- yes? Counsel Rivera?
Thank you for being here, Judge. I appreciate it. I had a question about the community service. Do you make certain assignments on community service, or are people allowed to?
We're not allowed to actually tell someone that- We're not allowed to actually tell someone that your community service has to be done at a certain place. We have a list that's pre-approved, actually, by city council that provides the nonprofits. And of course, many of the agencies on the list include the City of Santa Fe, Parks and Recreation, and other departments that the defendant chooses from. And so it is their selection.
Do we know if and how many are going to the city to do their community service?
We haven't been keeping that data, but we certainly can. I mean, we have access to that data, and I can get that to you.
Oh, great.
We don't have an exact number, but we can look that up.
Yeah, we just seem to be short-staffed in our Parks and Rec Department. I know some of it is safety-sensitive, but I'm sure there are areas where we could use some help, so.
Most certainly. I think that's a really good question to get a response to you for, how many of them actually have selected a city agency to perform their community service for. And I'm happy to get that information back to you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on that point. Thank you for joining us, Judge. Can you also give us a list of the nonprofits that you provide?
I can get that to you. I can give you the ones that are picked more frequently because that's really uppermost in my mind, and that is the Food Depot. And that Chain Links is another one, although I think they've cut back in their hours. It looks like a lot of the homeless population, really, you can't get money from them. So they get converted to community service, and their community service is actually conducted at the Interfaith.
Shelter.
Shelter. And, you know, some of the other shelters, if there's someone staying in a women's shelter, they can actually do that. So those are the major ones that come to mind. But there are other nonprofits that have become available to them. And of course, it has to be something that's worked out with the community service defendant because they actually meet with whoever will be supervising them, because that person actually has to check off all the hours that are performed. And, you know, if there isn't a mutual agreement as to whether that person's a good fit for the agency, that usually doesn't go through at all. So, you know, we're able to really get some good response from Food Depot, the Interfaith Shelter, and Chain Links has been very helpful, too. There's quite a few others that don't come to mind right now.
Thank you. Just had a question about the animal cases that you see, animal nuisance cases. Do you know if other cities have a different method of dealing with violations of animal nuisances and having the city represent against a neighbor versus having two neighbors be there at the same time, dealing with a situation when they're still going to be neighbors after the court case? And I ask that because it puts people in kind of compromising, uncomfortable situations. And I'm curious if there's other models that you've seen or heard about.
You know, I'm not sure I could answer that without having done the research. So that would have to be done. But I honestly cannot imagine a better model than what we have. Because animal cases, when it does involve a neighbor-to-neighbor, get best resolved through mediation. They enter into a mediation agreement. I have jurisdiction within that mediation agreement for a certain period of time, and if that mediation agreement is not complied with, then it comes back to the court. Then it gets prosecuted. Then it goes to the city attorney if the mediation doesn't work, mostly because it's an alternative sentencing process. And it does allow for the possible win-win situation when a neighbor is talking to the other neighbor, and many times, they haven't. You know, one neighbor has complained to animal control, and so the complaints come forth. And they don't even know what the problem is until they go into mediation.
Good to know. So mediation's the first step, and then if there's not a resolution, then it goes to...
The city prosecutor.
City prosecutor.
For prosecution.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate the update, and thanks for coming to see us. Appreciate it. Item number 12, an information presentation on the one-year review and evaluation of Environmental Services Division Fleeting Detailing Program.
Mayor, members of the committees. I really don't have a presentation. I do, it's pretty clear on the memo explanation of how that program has been going. I want to, I do want to point out that with the moisture that we've received in the last few days, there was a lot of mud and things that really dirtied those trucks, and we got through that relatively quick. So the trucks were cleaned up really good. The contractor that we're actually utilizing is doing a good job for the city. We're very happy with that contractor. And basically, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Very good. Are there questions? You have in your packet the report and the photos, so it's there to be seen, but I wonder if there are questions? No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to see us. Appreciate it.
Night.
Item number 13 is a consideration brought to us by Counselors Rivera and Ives. Alan?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Rick Carpenter. Alan Hook is out of town.
There's no Alan?
I'm standing in for him.
We have an Alan. We have the wrong Alan. Okay.
And thank you for the opportunity. This is, from my perspective, pretty simple. We're required by most of the potential funding entities, whether state or federal, to have permission from the governing body to make application for those funding sources. Specifically, NMFA requires that as part of their application process. So that's what this resolution is about. It's a requirement that, specifically for NMFA, which is probably our best funding source that we could hope for. We think we're going to get some federal funding, too, but... So this is for water and wastewater projects, authorization from the governing body to make application. If those applications go through their process, and we have a specific project that they would recommend for funding, we would bring it back to the governing body on that specific basis for specific projects. So we would be back before you if we're lucky enough to get the funding that we're asking for and making application, that we would be back in front of this governing body for authorization to do that. And I would be happy to stand for questions.
Counselor Ives?
Just a historical note. I think we started doing this four or five years ago after one season where folks from water and wastewater were in time after time on new grant agreements as they came up. So it's really an expediency measure, which says, chase those dollars on behalf of the city. So I think it's a great thing. I would move to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
A little more discussion, then we'll get to...
Second?
Oh, we have a second. We have discussion.
Hold the phone here. I have an amendment, which, I don't know how we deal with that, with this motion in the second, which I have discussed with the city attorney's office and with Alan Hook earlier today. And it's simply, it's to add in the next year after the first now, therefore be it resolved. So it would read, hold on. Okay, if you want to read it, that's...
Now, therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Santa Fe that the city manager is directed in the next year to colon...
Right. And my concern is, and this is sort of a longstanding concern with regard to resolutions, that we don't really know what their shelf life is. We are granting this, or we are directing this, the staff to do these things, but there's no time period set out in the resolution. And from talking with Alan, he says, as Counselor Ives pointed out, that this is something that has been sort of a routine thing that's done every year. And, you know, it's a way of expediting, but I do think we need to give it some, a timeframe, some time parameter. And that's why I brought forth this amendment.
Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, Rick. Does NMFA or the federal government require this to be done on an annual basis?
Counselor, Mr. Mayor, and counsel, my understanding is it's annual.
Okay. So they, before they look at any of our, or before we apply for any grants, they make sure that we have this on file and that it's updated on a yearly basis?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think your amendment just says exactly what we're doing, I guess. I think it's fine.
Friendly amendment? Any objection? So we can assume that that's now part of a motion to approve it as amended, then? Yes?
Friendly accept, and I accept as the second. Yes.
Ah, okay. You were the second. All good, then?
Good.
All right.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Ives.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor O'Meara Worth.
Yes.
Counselor DiAdian.
Yes.
Counselor Data.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved.
Thank you.
Counselor, thank you.
Item 14.
Can I just add a cosponsor on that from item 13? Thank you.
No worries. Request to publish notice of public hearing on October 30. We have items A and B. Let's take them sequentially. Item A, Counselor V. Hill Copley bringing it, and it, Mr. Jones, you are the, I don't know if you want to speak to it. Is there anything we need to know? Your acting city ma, acting, acting city man.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I really have no additional additions to it, but I'm more happy to answer any questions that the governing body may have.
Yes, Counselor V. Hill Copley?
Thank you, Mayor. I can also answer any questions with regard to the, I guess, if implemented, the practice involved. But I want to more so state that it did get a pass on, not a pass, it got approved at Public Utilities Committee.
Right.
And you have that in front of you. Thank you.
So is there a motion, or are there questions?
Motion to approve the request to publish notice of public hearing on, is it both items?
We have to...
Separately?
Yes.
All right. The first item.
Second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor O'Meara Worth?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill Copley?
Yes.
Counselor DiAdian?
Yes.
Counselor Data?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Data?
Yes.
Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And now it's item 14B, which is also a request to publish a notice of a public hearing. This involves our, bringing ourselves, dealing with the vehicle forfeiture ordinance. Yes, Counselor Rivera?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a clarification. What's the significance of the language to add to the caption that occurred prior to the Espinosa case?
And the interesting spelling of the word occurred.
Triple C occurred. The significance is, is that the Espinosa case was the case out of Albuquerque that found the Albuquerque municipal program to be preempted by the State Forfeiture Act. So basically, any funds that were obtained under the program, under the ordinance, as it was before it was preempted by the state, are the funds that would be redirected from forfeitures.
Okay. So Espinosa was the...
It was the Albuquerque case, at which we made the recommendation from my office that we put a stop to doing additional forfeitures after that point because our program was likely to be found preempted, and afterwards, it was found to be preempted.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Or motion? Second. Could we have the roll call, please?
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor O'Meara Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Hill Copley?
Yes.
Counselor DiAdian?
Yes.
Counselor Data?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. We will move to executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and no, you may not vote against yourself. You are, you're outvoted, Counselor. You're going to do this. If it weren't for the honor of the thing, I know you would, you wouldn't do it. Moving on, matters from Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, there are no matters from the city manager tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. From the city attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if it's the wish of the governing body, I recommend we go into executive session to discuss pending and threatened litigation. In particular, quarterly update of litigation, including Santa Fe v. Cephalon Inc., Santa Fe v. Boggs, City of Albuquerque et al. v. New Mexico Tax and Rev, and other cases threatened and pending.
Counselor Rivera?
Move that we enter into executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 10-15-1H, Subpart 7, for a discussion of threatened or pending litigation in which the governing body is or may become a participant.
Second. Please call the roll.
Counselor O'Meara Worth?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill Copley?
Yes.
Counselor DiAdian?
Yes.
Counselor Data?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Data?
Yes.
Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. We will move to executive session. I'm getting so gentle.
Hi.
Are they done?
Are they done?
Councilor Rivera, you want to make a motion to bring us back?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to the Opens Meeting Act, Section 10 Just 15-1J, I move that the governing body reconvene in open session and state for the record that the matters discussed in the closed session were limited to those specified in the motion for closure.
Second. All righty, can we call the roll?
Councilor Viall Copley?
Yes.
Councilor Abeta?
Yes.
Councilor Harris? Councilor Ives?
Yes.
Councilor Vivera?
Yes.
Councilor Mauerworth?
Yes.
However.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Are there any matters from the city clerk that you wish to bring to our attention?
I do have a few, Mayor. Want to remind the governing body that you will have a study session on Wednesday, October 23rd. Be five o'clock here in the chambers. Also reminder to our public that we have an election coming up. It's the regular local election, which will be held on November 5th of next month. Absentee in person and absentee by mail started today. That was over at the county. County Clerk's Office, 102 Grant Avenue. Early voting will start on October 19th. So all of these dates are up on our website, as well as the county clerk's website. The city will be sending out an election mail that we're going to try and send out the latest Saturday, maybe Friday. It'll go to all the registered voters, letting them know there's an election, absentee and early voting dates, times, that kind of information. This Saturday, October 12th, we are going to have a ranked choice voting refresher, and this will be over at Lafarge Library at 10:00 a.m. So that one is open to the public. Candidates are invited. The candidates will be filing their financial reports. Their next filing is this Friday, October 11th. And Lilia Chacon, who's our public information officer, will be posting election information on Facebook and Twitter. My update.
Thank you.
Yes.
Matters from communications from the governing body. Councilor Viall Copley, you have a communication for us?
Just to thank the various departments and city employees who staffed the breast cancer awareness walk. And thank you, Mayor and Councilor Viall for attending and all the support you gave to that.
And I believe there was an incognito council there.
Oh, there's Councilor Vivera, that's right.
He was, he was wearing his baseball cap and his shades, but he was there.
Yeah, I barely recognized him.
And you were, you gave a wonderful talk. That was very well done.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Councilor Abeta?
Yes, Mayor, if you could just add me as a cosponsor to your resolution regarding gun violence and solutions and gun violence among New Mexico youth.
Really noted, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Vivera?
Yeah, just wanted to echo what Councilor Viall Copley said about the cancer walk. Extremely well done, and if you could extend the thanks to all the city crews and staff that work that event. I would appreciate that. Other than that, no birthdays, we're all good, Mayor.
Well, maybe next time. Councilor Mauerworth?
I am good, thank you.
Councilor Harris?
Yes, Mayor, I also would like to be added as a cosponsor to the resolution urging the legislature to pass extreme risk protection. And I wanted to make all my colleagues aware of an honor that I'm going to be receiving Friday night. Seems that Keep Santa Fe Beautiful needed to award the Volunteer of the Year Award to someone, and I guess my name was in the hat. I'm not quite sure how I ended up, but I'm going to be honored as Volunteer of the Year for Keep Santa Fe Beautiful.
Do we, do we make any connection between the, the beauty of your own visage and the city?
None whatsoever.
No, I think so. Congratulations.
Oh, thanks.
Where will this celebration?
It's actually going to be Friday night at Quail Run.
All right.
It'll, it'll be a lot of fun.
Tickets are on sale.
And I should also say too, it's going to be a great event that same day. Troy Padilla, particularly in the Jet Center, one of our fixed base operators out at the airport, they're doing a big luncheon, barbecue for all employees out at the airport. And that's not just our employees certainly, but American Airlines, TSA, everybody who works out there is invited. And it should be a nice event.
Great, great thing to mention. Councilor Ives?
Mr. Mayor, first I would join the, your resolution to be introduced with regards to gun violence, and then had two items to introduce. One is an ordinance creating a new subsection to establish a stormwater utility enterprise fund and amending Exhibit A of Section 13-1.5 to increase the stormwater utility service charge. And then a second resolution directing the city manager to study the means by which the city's stormwater utility service charge can be made more equitable than it currently is, and to develop a system to ensure the city's stormwater utility service charge is fairly distributed and equitable to the citizens of Santa Fe, and to investigate the long-term benefits of forming a district stormwater utility department.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments for the good of the order?
I'm good.
You're good. I think, I'm going to, I'm going to assume that I am correct, but if I'm incorrect, you will guide me. In Councilor Lindell's absence, she has an item to be introduced, an ordinance amending Section 24-4.3, and I assume she would like that read into the record. And then there are three things I'm putting into the record, an ordinance amending various sections of the Santa Fe Homes program, getting that item moving, resolution urging New Mexico legislature to pass an extreme risk protection bill, more typos, but not, not to be too picky unish about it, and, and a portion to fund research, and a resolution establishing City of Santa Fe legislative priorities, all of which are being introduced and will be given thorough review. That completes... I'm missing something, Madam City Clerk. We're good. Councilor Harris will be in the chair at 7:00, and till then, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Get all, get prepped for Councilor Harris taking over for the afternoon, so... Okay.
Thank you.
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 That right arm has collapsed.
Would you like a roll call? Mayor Weber. Excused, thank you. Counselor Beta.
Here.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Ives.
Here.
Counselor Vindell.
Excused, thank you. Counselor Rivera.
Here.
Counselor Matt Worth.
Here.
Counselor Vehel Copler.
Here.
Counselor Vieryan.
Present.
Do you have a quorum present?
Thank you, thank you. Petitions from the floor. Do we have anybody who'd like to speak to the governing body? Please step forward.
It's already going.
Stephanie Benonato. I'm coming here because I am concerned about land use and the lack of enforcement. Two weeks ago, I came and mentioned a giant RV sitting at 1,008 Don Diego. Two weeks later, it's still there. That was six weeks into that RV sitting there, being lived in. My neighbor complained actually as well. And she sent me an email today. And she spoke with Greg Smith. This is her email. "I spoke with Greg Smith and was told that they sent somebody out there already and could find no sign of anyone living in the RV." I told him that was absolutely wrong. I mean, if the person A, if anybody actually went out there is questionable. But if you couldn't see the water hose coming out from the house, the big white water PVC line coming from the house to the RV, and you couldn't see the orange electric cord, then you really weren't looking. And then Mr. Smith actually said to her that he, you know, he told her to call somebody else. And he said that they had no other, he had no record of anyone else having made a complaint on this issue. I'm sorry, I contacted constituent services and Ms. Carol Johnson three weeks into it. That was five weeks ago. And then the next week, I emailed Ms. Johnson and Mr. Smith. And two and a half weeks ago, I talked to Mr. Smith about this. And he said that after waiting five weeks, that some of the things that I gave you all, the list of the things I gave you, that they were being assigned. So how can we actually trust land use, or really almost anybody, if they're not telling us the truth? And just to be put off and put off and put off, did my complaint not count because it's me? I don't know. I mean, am I the messenger that nobody bothers to look at? Because I'm certainly not getting any read receipts back from you on the things that I've sent you. And there were three emails that I sent you. And none of you responded as getting them, except of course for Alan, who told me he deleted them without reading them. Which at least is honest, although I don't think is quite transparent or including everybody in his big tent. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Seeing none, I think we'll close the petitions from the floor. We have no appointments, but with the first public hearing is a consideration of bill 2019-32, adoption of ordinance number...
2019-51.
Fifty-one, thank you, clerk. So, you're presenting, Mr. Flitch?
I am. Good evening, councilors. This ordinance refunds the 2010 general obligation bond. The reason why we're refunding this general obligation bond is because we can save $570,000 over the next 10 years for a present value savings, net present value savings of $516,000 approximately. This roughly saves $52,000 per year for the city. Refunding this bond will benefit the city property taxpayers. That none of this savings will come to the city. Because of the way general obligation bonds are done, they are funded entirely from property taxes assessed. And the Department of Finance Administration annually asks the city, what is our general obligation debt service going to be? And they calculate a mill rate. And so the city's mill rate is made up of two pieces. Our operating mill rate, which is 3.189%, and our debt service mill rate, which last year was .587. And due to the appreciation of residential property and commercial property, it's going to drop to 4.83% in FY '19. This will barely move the rate even lower. But it is $52,000 a year for the city, for the taxpayers. We felt that it's important that the city demonstrate to our constituents that we are proactive and prudent in the management of the city's finances. And that's why we're bringing forward this refunding.
Very good. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak to this particular ordinance? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and direct any questions from the governing body? In the event there's no questions, can I get a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second.
Yes.
Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Ives.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Matt Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vehel Copler.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Flitch. Next item is consideration of bill number 2019-12, adoption of ordinance number 2019-...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Ordinance amending various sections of chapter 14. So, Mr. Burke, you're going to present to us?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, governing body members. The proposal before you tonight is to repeal the summary committee and make subdividing one lot into two lots as an administrative process of the land use director. This proposal was created in an effort to streamline operations, reduce board hearings, and make this an administrative review while maintaining transparency to the public. The summary committee is made up of three planning commissioners who meet once a month to hear applications to subdivide one lot into two lots. The process of going before the summary committee, which is a public hearing, can take up to three months. Staff has observed that generally there are, on average, one to two lot split applications per meeting, if even that. And that these meetings last anywhere from 10 minutes to one hour. Staff normally attends these meetings and it consists of the city attorney, a case planner, the planner manager, and a hired stenographer. The planning commission heard this text amendment proposal at their June 6, 2019 meeting and voted to postpone it. Concerns were raised primarily with transparency, public notification, and appeals. After the meeting, staff met with Counselor Beta and Commissioners Gutierrez and Garcia. Options were presented that included amendments to notice requirements which would require notice at least 30 days before the land use director acts upon a lot split application. Notice would be in the form of a poster similar to the public notification posters that you see around town, which would state the application is under review and the notice would be mailed to all owners of properties as shown on the records of the county treasurer and to the physical addresses of the properties where the mailing or physical address is different than the address of the owner, and to neighborhood associations within 100 feet. The notice will state the property address, applicant name, the name and phone number of staff, and the date that a decision will be rendered and made. This will give neighbors or citizens the opportunity to request that the land use director refer the application to be heard by the planning commission for review and decision. The land use director may not act on an application before the expiration of the 30-day notice period. A final decision by the land use director may be appealed within 30 days of the decision. These options were agreed upon by the counselor and the commissioners and then re-presented at the planning commission meeting on August 15. At this meeting, they requested one additional change, which I stated before, which states that mailing will be to all owners of properties as shown on the records of the county treasurer and to the physical addresses of the properties where the mailing or physical address is different than the address of the owner. The proposal was then heard at the finance committee where concerns were raised about having a devoted staff member to review lot splits. After hearing this concern, staff has decided that we will have one staff member who is specifically assigned to lot splits, and this will be the planner position that's in the current planning division. They will be responsible for coordinating the review with development review team members and coordinating the review with the land use director, and ultimately rendering a decision. Another concern was raised about appeals of the land use director and the planning commission. Ultimately, finance committee voted to approve this, and then it was heard by the public works committee on August 26 and approved, and that leaves us here today. So I thank you, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this matter? Please step forward.
Karen Heldmeyer, 325 East Berger. We really appreciate the work that Counselor Beta and others have done on this to try to get more public input and more public notice. As I said, what, three months ago, whenever this started? Ninety percent of the time, lot splits are not controversial, they're not a problem. But we need to worry about the other 10%. However, let me say that the bigger issue hasn't been addressed. And the bigger issue is the question of serial lot splits. And this has been a problem in the past. Somebody comes in, gets a lot split, holds it for a very short period of time, and under this, it would have to be 30 days. And then sells the two pieces to someone, who then comes in and gets another lot split, and then so on, and that's why it's called serial. So it is illegal under state law to have serial lot splits. However, it's not a very clear law, and it's not, a lot of attention is paid to it. The reason that this is important is not because we don't want the land use director to be deciding about lot splits. The reason it's important is if you split a lot too many times, it becomes a subdivision. And we have rules for subdivision, and we have requirements for subdivision. And in the past, people have tried to circumvent those rules by doing these serial lot splits so that things that they're required to do by law aren't required. So I think there needs to be some rules or something similar for when the land use director approves a lot split, because otherwise, we're going to have the problem we had in the past, which is people have tried to come in and not met the obligations of a subdivision by splitting and resplitting the lots.
Thank you, Ms. Heldmeyer.
Stephanie Benonato. I'm concerned when more authority is given to administration than not, especially when there was a public body, a civilian or citizen review board, looking at it. I do understand that lot splits take a long time. I did a lot split, and yes, it took quite a long time. It was not controversial. My concern is that the notice is only to within 100 feet. On many other land use applications, it's 200 feet. If the land use director is requested to have a hearing at the planning commission is at a requirement, they don't get to say yes or no, that's an obligation, that they have to take it to the planning commission. Then it says within 30 days of the decision, you get to appeal, but to where? And how do you, because again, normally for a permit, the land use director, it's 15 days. And it's not clear to me, because in the appeal ordinance that I read, it said from boards, you have 30 days, but from land use director decisions, it's 15 days. So I think it needs to be very clear that it is actually 30 days. And I think it needs to be clearer in more than one place in these revised ordinance, whether you're appealing to court or whether you get to appeal to city council. Because it's usually something from planning commission does go to city council. And that is a more reasonable approach, in my opinion, than forcing somebody to go to court within 30 days. It's hard enough, as some of the lawyers here could tell you, to get a lawyer within 30 days, and let alone actually do a substantive appeal that would hold up. Then my other thing is, again, how to document when the notice goes up. I understand the... But it would seem to me that it would benefit everybody on every land use document that's issued, whether for subdivision, for a permit, et cetera, that you have that person document sent back to land use, so it's in the file. There's the affidavit, here's the photograph, this notice went up. I'm sorry, it's just cutting out, I don't know why it's cutting out. So anyway, those are some of my suggestions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benonato. Any other members of the public? Close the public hearing. Questions from the governing body? Counselor Vehel Copler, you'll start us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. This question can either be for you, Noah, or for Ms. Johnson. With regard to the testimony just made by Ms. Heldmeyer regarding serial lot splits, what safeguards do we have, or do you all have in place to prevent this from happening?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors. What we have is if you subdivide a lot, and then you re-subdivide it within a three-year period, it triggers a serial subdivision, a preliminary subdivision requirement. So you would have to go to planning commission if you subdivide a lot within three. And it would go through the preliminary and final subdivision plat. And so we have the safeguards that you could not, or go through the proper process for subdivision, for preliminary and final, within a three-year period.
So if it's three years and one day?
I, sorry, it's five years. Five years, not three years, I'm sorry. So if it's five years and one day, and they re-subdivide a lot, it would just be another lot split.
So would that constitute, or no longer constitute, serial lot splitting?
That's correct.
And is that legal? Then that, if it meets that criteria?
It would still need to meet all the other zoning criteria for lot size and dimensions, but it would, it is legal.
All right, so within the department, there is, there's some procedure that triggers the five-year thing? It's not something that could be overlooked?
If it's five years or less, we always look at the date of the original subdivision of the land, and we look at that date in reference to what they're proposing. So if it's within five years, it would trigger a subdivision process, preliminary and final subdivision plating. If it's after five years, and they can still meet the zoning requirements, then it would just be another lot split process. And lot splits still require infrastructure, they still require easements. It still is a subdivision. The only primary difference with is it's just one lot into two lots. If you're doing one lot into three lots, you're still going to go into preliminary and final subdivision plating.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Beta?
Mr. Burke, so to continue with this, on this subject of serial subdivision, what if it's a different property owner? If somebody buys the, like, one of the pieces of property, can they subdivide it within five years without having to go through the preliminary plat process? Or does that trigger it also?
Mayor Protem, councilors, Counselor Beta, thank you for that question. It does not matter who's the owner, it matters that the property has been subdivided within a certain timeframe.
Okay, so you would still look at the plat, look at the date, and if it's within five years, even though it's a different owner, they will still be subject to going through?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Counselor. Counselor Ives?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So having been involved in a couple of lot splits in the past, in connection with a former job, my recollection is that the notice that was required to be sent out was, I'm remembering, 300 feet. Why are we proposing 100 here as opposed to those larger numbers?
Mayor, Protem, councilors, Counselor Ives, the reason we chose 100 feet is, I think it was just a decision that we thought that people within 100 feet were the most directly impacted by this versus within the 300 feet that's required in other land use mailing requirements. Counselor Beta, Commissioner Gutierrez, and Commissioner Garcia were all, and our city attorney and myself, were all struggling with what is the right amount of distance. And I think that we all felt that 100 feet was appropriate. We weren't usually getting people coming to testify, if anybody comes to testify at lot split hearings, that were 300 feet away. So I think we just generally reached a decision that 100 feet was, was the right number, and that's my recollection of it.
And if, where is the 100-foot measurement taken from?
It's taken from all the different property lines of the property.
So from around the boundary?
Mm-hmm.
So if the property itself were 100 feet wide, we'd actually be talking about a 300-foot. swath, yes?
It would be, if it's, it's 100 feet from every part of the property line, so it would be just 100 feet in each direction.
Yes. I'm just saying, if the property were 100 feet wide, and you were extending out to the sides, that would be two additional 100 feet, so that would be--
Correct.
You know, across the scope of that 300 feet. So it's, it's really 200 feet in that sense.
No, I, so I think that it would just be 100 feet in each direction is the best way to think of it.
Don't want to, don't want to quibble words. And so where does an appeal go?
Counselor, that's a great question. So I actually wrote this down, because there was some questions about that. If it's an appeal of the land use director's decision, it goes to Planning Commission. And then if that's appealed, it goes to District Court. If it's the Planning Commission's decision is being appealed, it goes straight to District Court. To the governing body. It goes, if it's Planning Commission, it goes to the governing body.
I'd suggest you repeat that.
Yeah.
If it's an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision, then it goes, it goes to the governing body.
You also said if it's an appeal of the land use director's decision, it goes to the Planning Commission. And then does it come to the governing body? So--
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Members of-- So on the appeal, if, if it's a final decision of the land use director, that would go to the appropriate land use board, in this case, the Planning Commission, for the, the one appeal, that would be heard at the city level. And then that would be appealed further to District Court. If the land use director refers the, the decision on the summary lot split to the Planning Commission, which would then be the, the body that makes the final action, the Planning Commission's final action would still have one city-level appeal, which would then be heard by you. And then that would also, of course, be appealed to District Court. So there's one level of, at the city, appeal.
Just wanted to make sure I understood those distinctions. And what is the appeal period for each of those appeals?
Thank you, Councilor Ives, members of the governing body. I hope that you all received a Second Amendment tonight to the, I see you holding one, that does address the appeal provisions. In reviewing the bill today, we did notice that there was a potential discrepancy. The intent was certainly to retain a 30-day appeal period for a summary lot split, which is the current time under the code. As I believe Ms. Benanato pointed out in her, her public comments, if you read the, the language now in the appeal provision, it talks about a decision of a land use board on a subdivision having a 30-day appeal period. But it does say land use board. So the intent of that Second Amendment that you should have before you tonight, that hopefully you would include in, in any ultimate adoption of this bill, it does clarify that a decision of the land use director on a summary subdivision would have a 30-day appeal period. So we'd be retaining the same 30-day, from the time of the final action of the land use director, there'd be 30 days to file the appeal.
And what do you think about any type of requirement to actually have the applicant file with the city a notice that the posting has been done?
Thank you for that question. I, I think that's more of a global concern for all types of city notice posters. And I don't know if, if, it might be better addressed by perhaps Noah or Carol, because I think that, as a general matter, on all of our notice posters, there's not necessarily a real consistent process of folks sending us, like, a photograph or something. So I think that's something we've, we've been exploring, if you want to address it further.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and councilors. So what we have is a notification affidavit, that they sign, a posting, a notification affidavit, that's, that they certify they've done it within the timeframe. Very often, the planners themselves go out to the site and actually verify that the posting has been appropriately done. And then if there's any concern, that's an appealable thing as well, that a lot of times we'll get complaints that it was not posted in the right amount of time, or at the, in a publicly visible spot. But the affidavit and the, and the notice of posting requirements is something that is used for all of our posting, that we have notarized and signed by the applicant. So that's the way that the city in the past and the city attorney's office has determined was our best legal mechanism at the time. And hopefully, I think with technology today, people, particularly applicants, send us digital photos with timestamps on them, which is helpful for us when people, because it is a common complaint that it wasn't posted on the right date and time. It's very difficult to prove that, so.
So if we know it's a common complaint, and we have an opportunity, especially with camera phones, to solve that problem very easily, it sounds like it would take a minimal change to the code to accomplish that. I'm happy to sponsor that, if, if that can be prepared by our legislative liaison, unless the land use director has a problem with that.
No, Mr. Ives, I think, I think it might have, you might not have appreciated what Mr. Burke just said. He said, we do require a notice, or an affidavit filed by the applicant stating that the sign was posted on the effective date. It would be more of a procedural requirement if we require a photo and a date-stamped photo along with that. Right now, they're testing, they're filing an affidavit attesting that they've met all the required notice requirements. We have also recently updated our building permit, notice, or building permits to have that same notice, that same affidavit requirement. I think that has been a bigger concern, that when building permits are posted, there's a 15-day appeal period, and those are often, there's a question about whether those are filed in a timely manner. But we have the actual affidavit signed by the applicant to refer to.
Understood, although it sounded like there were still complaints coming in from folks who might not have agreed. Would that be accurate?
Mayor Protem, councilors, Councilor Ives, I'd say that it has been a, there have been concerns that posting was not done appropriately in the past, and that with technology today as it is, we, that some applicants are choosing to send us. And like Director Johnson said, it is more of a procedural thing that we can change in requiring photos rather than ordinance change. But to go back to the original question, I think that it, there have been complaints before. I don't think there has actually, that I can remember, been like an appeal due to posting requirements of an application.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Protem?
Yeah. Councilor Romero-Worth?
So under what circumstances does the land use director defer to the Planning Commission?
Mayor Protem, councilors, Councilor Romero-Worth, if the land use director, if a member of the public or any, any person comes in regarding a lot split case before a decision has been rendered, they have the option, the land use director would meet with them and review their claims, and decide ultimately if they have mayor, or if she would like to have the Planning Commission just hear the lot split case. So that would be, it's up, it's at her discretion to make that decision.
So would it be fair to say, Councilor Haldemire said 90% of the time, these are non-controversial, 10% of the time, they are controversial? In the case where it might be controversial, might be an instance where the land use director would use her discretion or his discretion to move it to the Planning Commission? Is that the kind of thing that might trigger that, that change?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, councilors, Councilor Romero-Worth. Yes, that is, is one of those times, if it was a controversial case, I believe the land use director would most likely have the Planning Commission hear the case.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Villarreal, please.
Thank you, Mr. Protem. So I understand the need for streamlining as it relates to administrative processes, and eliminating a body that may or may not, I mean, they may be approaching the same kind of regulations that you all would in the office. So I understand that. I guess I was just trying to understand, for you all, the change in the distance of mailing, the mailing notice? What was the reasoning, again, to change it from 300 to 100?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, councilors, Councilor Villarreal. I think that it was a consensus decision between two long-serving members of the summary committee and Councilor Beta. And Councilor Beta, if you feel free to chime in, if you, if your recollection's different.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We're, we're actually not opposed to the 300 feet. If we want to go back to that this evening, that's fine. I think it was, as Mr. Burke had stated, the planning commissioners who served on the summary committee were like, we've never seen anybody unless they were, like, adjacent to the property or within the 100 feet. But by all means, we're, we would be okay with just keeping the 300-foot notification.
I'm, I'm, I think I'm, I think that's where I'd like to go. Might as well just keep it consistent what it was before, but really allow internal staff to take a lead role versus a committee that, like you had said, they don't have many cases. It's usually a quick meeting. And I think about all the procedural stuff and all the staff requirements to staff and also prepare for the summary committee meetings. It's a lot, and that's why it takes a long time for people to get through the process. So I'm in favor of making that adjustment. I, I would just like to keep it the same distance of notification for the mailings.
Okay. Councilor Rivera, you had comments, questions?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I agree with the 300 feet. And I also agree with Councilor Ives on the signage. So they give you the affidavit, they put the sign up, even if they're required to take a photo the day that they put it up. I've seen signs that are up for a week, and then they're blown by the wind and facing different directions, or can't even tell what they are. Do we do any kind of continual process of making sure those signs are visible?
Mayor Protem, councilors, Councilor Rivera, I think it would be, we don't. We don't go out there weekly. It's not part of our procedures or process. It's very difficult to, with the amount of cases that have posting requirements, to go out and check. I do completely understand that the sun takes the toll, the weather takes the toll. Kids who have a lot of free time take a toll. I've seen them used as sleds, you know, after cases have been. But we, I, I would say that we don't go out consistently. We usually rely on that affidavit, and we rely on the applicant, to be honest. And we also rely on neighbors to let us know if they're not being honest. So, and then staff, at least my staff, tries to go out for their cases, you know, at least once, as soon as the case, as the posting's supposed to happen, to make sure that there's correct posting and get familiar with the sites under review. So.
Again, Councilor Ives, with the use of technology these days, I think, you know, a photo once a week is not unreasonable, and I'd be happy to co-sponsor something with you if you were so inclined to make those changes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Excuse me. So my question is, is just to follow up on the last point made by Councilor Rivera, and then prior to that, Councilor Ives. You seem to be saying, Mr. Burke, that that could be done procedurally, that would not necessarily have to be embedded in an ordinance?
Counselors, Mayor Protem, it could be procedurally. We could make this-- that would be something that we could follow within our department, and I don't think anybody would have, you know, I don't think there'd be a lot of pushback.
Okay. Well, it seems to me that, again, if we're, part of what we're doing is allowing staff to be efficient, and really to track the progress, it seems like we could allow them, I, I believe we could allow them just to, with that language in their procedures and follow it up. But, you know, that's just, you know, it can be done either way, I suppose. Ms. Johnson wants to add some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the governing body. It is a requirement that the, that the applicants maintain the signs and that they stay visible and readable. As we implement our, further implement our inter-gov system, we'll actually be issuing a PDF that then the applicants will take to a sign company and have it pre-printed. So that'll improve the durability of the text on those signs, because they're a Sharpie marker. It's already been pre-printed. But I think the idea that as, as part-- the plan could ask for, at certain decision-making points, ask for evidence that the sign has still been posted. For example, there's a cutoff period by when we have to submit the application for, for publishing, publication in the newspaper, publishing the agenda. Those would be typical points where the public is really going to be aware of the case, and if the sign isn't visible at that point, then it could result in us pulling the case and postponing it until we can verify that a sign is visible on the property. So while maybe not seven days, there are some key decision points that we can incorporate into a policy, and we can bring that back as an informational item to the governing body, and you can review that language.
Counselors, is that satisfactory?
I would be fine with that.
Okay. Additional questions? But I also want to say that I heard loud and clear that there would be no resistance, in fact, a greater comfort level, if that's the right word, to go back to the 300 feet.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor Protem, with that, I'll move for approval of bill number 2019-12 with the 300-foot notice requirement.
And with the amendment sheet?
With the amendment.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion? And a second? Discussion? Just curious, this amendment sheet we just received, I didn't get a chance to look at it, so, and there's a typo. I think that means for page three, sorry, page 23, delete lines 18 through 19, and then the addition was the, within 30 days for appeals of approval or denial, blah, blah, blah. It should say resubdivision, right? Not resubdivition? Resubdivision or summary subdivision? I think that's what we meant. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, within 15 days of the date of final action for all other appeals. Can you just, can you explain that really quick, somebody? I didn't catch that amendment. Within 15 days of the date of final action for all other appeals. What was that referring to, again?
Thank you, members of the governing body, Councilor Villarreal. The, the 15-day period applies to decisions of, of the historic district's review board falls into that 15-day category. The decisions of the Board of Adjustment fall into that 15-day category. And then a lot of the other land use director decisions also fall into the 15-day category. So the issuance, I believe, of a building permit triggers the 15 days. Other final actions of the land use director that aren't otherwise captured in those sub-paragraphs A and B would be subject to the 15-day instead of the 30-day appeal period.
So I'm looking at, hmm. B didn't change, though.
B is new. I haven't actually seen the formatted amendment, so--
It says B and C, so--
B has been inserted between existing, A and C are the existing language, and B's been inserted. Yes, C, C is the same as it was before. It's just been moved down.
Okay. So that language, so A's in place, B was added.
Yes. B is new.
And B became C.
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Okay.
B is new to make sure that these new summary subdivision decisions made by the land use director receive the same 30-day period as other subdivision decisions.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. So we, we have a motion and a second.
So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes. Councilor Beta?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Ives?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Councilor Viall Copler?
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Good. Thank you. Well, with that, I believe, no, we did that, you missed that, because I, I believe we're adjourned.
Did a good job, Mayor Protam.
Good job.